...as a cellphone or other electronic device that either turn it to silent or turn it off. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway. Items one through four have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendations by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item four, sixteen UR zero zero three. The rapid planning commission's action on this item is final unless any party appeals that decision to the council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the community planning and development services department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through four staff would like removed?
Item number four, please.
Okay. Any items one through four that the planning commission would like removed?
Two.
And would the audience like to remove either one or three? Seeing none, chair would entertain a motion to approve items one and three per staff recommendation. Linda made the motion, Galen seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Items one and three are passed, number two.
I'll be abstaining from number two.
Likewise.
Karen and Andy will abstain from item number two. Linda made the motion to approve, is it Galen seconded? Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item number two per staff recommendations, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Item number two carries. Number four?
Thank you. Item number four is sixteen UR zero zero three, a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a tasting bar. This item should have been on non-consent, that's why we pulled it. Let me take you through some slides. Take a look, the property is located at six twenty-seven Saint Joseph Street. This is the location of the Santa, Vita Santa Olive Oil Company. It's an artisanal food shop. They're proposing to add the sale and service of wine for tastings and for special events as a part of the services rendered by the business. The property is owned in central business district located at the corner of Saint Joseph and Seventh Street. I'll look at the aerial view. Future land use map shows it is appropriate in the downtown corridor and Saint Joseph Street is listed as a principal arterial street on the city's major street plan. So, look at the floor layout for the facility. They're not proposing any additions or expansions of the existing building. They are proposing to put three wine racks at the rear of the store to carry their product. Look at the exterior of the facility, you can see the on-sale liquor sign, the conditional use permit sign located in the window. I'll look at Saint Joseph Street looking to the east and the sidewalk streetscape on Saint Joseph Street looking to the east of the building. Saint Joseph looking west and the streetscape to the west of the building. As I said, this item, we pulled this item off of the consent agenda due to the on-sale liquor nature of the request, however, due to the fact that they're not proposing any additions or expansions to the facility and that the on-sale liquor establishment will operate as an accessory to the existing artisanal food shop, staff is recommending that this application be approved with the stipulations noted in the staff report.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? Karen made the motion to approve, Linda seconded. All those in favor of approval of item four per stipulation? Please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
Item number five is a final plan development to allow an oversized garage in a low-density residential district. This one's been on and off the agenda for a few months. Property's located on the south side of Skyline Drive. Existing view of the property, there's a single-family home, two-story with a three-stall attached garage. The applicant's proposing to construct a forty-two by sixty-eight-foot, five-stall detached garage on the west side of the property. Future land use is low-density neighborhood and Skyline Drive is identified as a collector street. Significance of that is that the applicant is requesting a reduction in setback from twenty-five feet to two feet from the right-of-way for Skyline Drive and to allow a height of sixteen feet in lieu of fifteen feet for an accessory structure. Site plan shows the proposed garage in this location. The applicant has indicated that as part of the request, they're proposing to convert the existing three-stall attached garage into living space and to have five total garage stalls which would all be in this detached garage. Elevation view showing the rendering. The sixteen feet is needed because the type of structures they're proposing to put in there are RV, a boat, and water truck. Staff is in support of the exception to allow a height of sixteen feet in lieu of fifteen feet for an accessory structure. Another rendering. After the last meeting, applicant requested to continue this item and submitted a turning movement analysis. Basically, that analysis indicates that for the proposed garage, two-foot setback is needed in order to accommodate the vehicles that are being proposed to be used in that. They attempted to show it at eight feet and different distances from the property line and this indicates that they're, you know, as they move it further away from the property line, there are points of conflict. This is a view of the property many months ago, sign posted on it. Originally, staffs had some issues with the proposed oversized garage. Skyline Drive is identified as a collector street requiring a twenty-five-foot setback. The applicant's requesting two feet. Skyline Drive is also identified, or has a Skyline Drive infrastructure and development plan which identifies a twenty-five-foot setback to structures and this was adopted by the city council in ninety-five. Skyline Drive is identified as a South Dakota State scenic byway and back in two thousand twelve, a variance for the very same application was denied by the zoning board of adjustment. At this time, the applicant is claiming reasonable accommodation according to the American with Disabilities Act and with the turning movement analysis indicating that the proposed location is the only location for this sizes garage on the property, staff is recommending that the, if the planning commission deems that this is reasonable accommodation, that the final plan development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report including a reduction in setback from twenty-five feet to two feet. I'm sure there's some speaker request forms, but if there are any questions from staff at this time? I'd ask that questions regarding the ADA to be directed to Carla, please.
Thank you, Fletcher. Karen?
Just for the record, I'm going to recuse myself from this item.
We do have a couple speaker request forms, one from Kent Hague.
Good morning, I'm Kent Hague, partner of Whiting Hague and Hague Law Firm. I represent Steve and Lynn Hammond, they're the applicants and the landowners to this request. A thorough description of the history of this application has been provided to you. Also, I've provided a submittal, I apologize, it was yesterday at about a quarter to four, but the submittal was provided to you for your review, a quick synopsis of the scenario and the situation. As you probably recall, this has had a number of continuances at applicant's request. There were a number of things that we wanted to demonstrate and the reason why is because unlike most applications where you review it and you compare it to ordinances and whether there are issues that somehow accept it from a part of the ordinance or not as you normally go forward on most of your applications, this is very different. This not only has those type of issues that all are worthy and have merit of their own, but this is also being submitted to you under the Americans with Disabilities Act. The Americans with Disabilities Act places an affirmative obligation on a municipality to accommodate, reasonably accommodate. And so, we wanted to make sure that your record, the record of the city was replete with why this was a reasonable accommodation and in fact, the record now has in it a number of many, many doctors' opinions, not only establishing the fact that Mr. Hammond, a Navy veteran, is a disabled vet and is considered to be one-hundred percent disabled and obviously does qualify under the ADA, there is a first threshold, but also that what they're requesting is the reasonable accommodation contemplated by the ADA. So, part of the letter we submitted yesterday is also being for your file, is an acknowledgement on behalf of my clients that if the city of Rapid City grants this exception and allows them to build this structure, that they do acknowledge that that is a reasonable accommodation and the reasonable accommodation has been granted so that never again, as far as this structure goes, as far as this item goes, would there be any recourse saying, well, you didn't do what you needed to do. But under the proposal that has been submitted a number of times, making sure that all different machinations were considered, we want to assure the commission that two different engineering firms have reviewed this and as well as surveyors, et cetera, and have determined that this is the only place this structure can be located. So, we would respectfully request that you approve this application and would be happy to, Mr. and Mrs. Hammond are here as well as Mike Toohey from the engineering firm of KTM to also field the questions.
Thank you. I have another request from both Steve and Lynn Hammond, would you like to speak at this point?
They may take an opportunity to speak if there's a negative or unfavorable motion made, they'd like to address it to enlighten the commission more if necessary, but otherwise there are more here for any question. Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion from the planning commission? Kim?
I guess I have a question for the landowners or Mr. Hague. I understand that we're really dealing with the reasonable accommodations for ADA and so it's our job to figure out what is reasonable and so I'm kind of wondering why five stalls? I've read that there's RV, there's a water truck, the doctors, I read those notes, they said they need shop space, but why five stalls? And in your recent letter, you note vandalism, so I'm wondering how much is to get cars or items in a garage for vandalism versus the ADA side?
The vandalism has been one unfortunate side effect, if you will, of having their vehicles and property out in the open. It is right next to the turnaround, or not turnaround, but the viewing point, the circle up on Skyline Drive. So, with people going up there at all hours of the night and throwing trash and breaking things and in fact, breaking into things, those are some obvious reasons. But the main reason is the, and this is where I might defer to his wife Lynn who can probably explain this much better and in a much more compelling way than I can, but they have the regular driving vehicles and a pickup plus I also have a water truck. When the home was built and when the lot was platted, it had been platted before or without water being to that lot and that was, they are not the ones that had the lot platted itself, but it was a platted residential lot and to this day, there's no water service up there. So, one of the stalls is for their water, they have an old three-quarter ton pickup that has a water tank on it and he hauls water as necessary with a storage cistern on the property. The, another vehicle, there are two regular cars and then another vehicle is an RV and this goes directly to his needs to be able to reasonably travel anywhere. The RV is equipped with special air conditioning units and these air conditioning units are able to maintain a far greater and far lower temperature than most standard RVs and that is one of the vehicles that goes inside. Mr. Hammond's condition disallows his neurological system to control his temperature, his body temperature in lower extremities. Therefore, it always feels like he's getting, you know, your leg, as he describes it, your leg falls asleep and you get up and there's like a thousand needles in it. He said triple or quadruple that and you'll have an idea of what this feels like, the burning pain sensations. But it's not only that pain, but it's also being, because there's not a, there's not preceptive sensory down there to be able to determine if something has injured his foot or if maybe in the winter when it does feel comfortable, when frostbite might be setting in, those are the kind of maladies that are present in their everyday life. So, that's the RV. The boat is a houseboat. When it gets warmer here, you can find them almost on a regular basis up at Pactola and the houseboat, it's not a regular boat, it's a houseboat, again specially equipped with air conditioning units. But Pactola is one of the lakes, as everybody knows, with cooler water and he can literally be, find comfort by getting in the water in the summertime, otherwise you're housebound in regular temperatures without the ability to have a fan with him or have an ice bucket with him. Today, they're sitting back there because he has a fan blowing on his legs. So, it's a real deal and every one of, because these are some of the very first questions I knew that would logically be asked and these are the same questions I asked them and it is very compelling, again, much more compelling to hear them talk about it than me, but I hope that satisfies your question. Also, by the way, they did, the home currently does have three stalls and those will be converted into living space as to, again, in an effort to come into compliance as close as possible with existing ordinances and, you know, not resulting in having eight stalls on a residential lot and those kind of things. Believe me, we've looked at every different possible arrangement for where this could go and again, two engineering firms are also part of your record that this is the only place it can go. Thank you.
Any follow-up, Kim? Galen?
Thank you. I guess I'm first going to, wanted to consider this without thinking about ADA and just looking at how appropriate it is for this property and just wanted to maybe touch on, it looks like there's a little bit of a wider right-of-way just looking at the site plan, so that might be advantageous for citing this garage there. And there's also, I'm looking at pictures of the, there's a couple trees basically right behind the garage, correct? I guess I haven't driven by there recently, but I'm assuming those, there's still a vegetative buffer between the garage and the, and the street kind of, is that correct or will there be new, more vegetation put in? Can I start there?
They intend to landscape and again, intentions are the pathway to you know where, but they intend and the only reason they have it is because of the pending building that they want to do there, but they will add additional vegetation as well to make it very aesthetically appealing. One of the things that we're all sensitive to as Rapid Cityans is our Skyline Drive and they more than anyone want to preserve and protect that, they love that area, that is their area, their residents there. Right now, you may have seen some of what it looks like with all the different things that they have there, all the different vehicles and equipment and so forth that are not able to be properly housed and frankly, it's not that attractive. The house is beautiful, but by its, by the mere virtue of it being out there, it looks like there's a lot of stuff out there, which there is. This would all go away and be in one very attractive building and also the building itself sits on the east side of Skyline Drive. It does not obstruct the viewing area that is right across the street, the loop and again, matter of fact, it would improve the looks of the area. It does not violate or anyway compromise or impair safety issues, site triangles, those types of things. One thing I found during my representation is the, as a lot of us know, the right-of-ways on Skyline Drive, it's a collector which I believe is sixty-eight feet width required normally, this is a hundred feet width, the right-of-way and then, so in certain parts of Skyline Drive, because of its very nature, sometimes it goes less than sixty-eight feet than to sixty-six, sixty-eight and where it can, apparently it's a hundred and not there's anything wrong with that, but if you looked at what the setback would be, the request would be if it was a sixty-eight foot right-of-way, we would have had very little, there'd be very little controversy as to allowing this to go forward, but there's a hundred feet, okay, so there's a hundred feet, but what that does is it provides plenty of width for future reconstruction of what the city's plans might be to rebuild Skyline Drive and do those types of things. So, it, and I would defer before I spout off about engineering and things like that, I would, you know, if there's any further engineering questions, I'll have Mike Toohey get up here and visit with you about that also. But when you look up there, you just think, and especially when you look at those areas, you think there's got to be someplace else besides within two foot of the right-of-way. It's a big piece of property. Well, much of it is vertical or at a pretty good slope and believe me, we've gone over that place. Two engineering firms have looked over, come to the same conclusion in addition to the latest one with the turning analysis and that's where it has to be located.
Yeah, I guess that's, just want to kind of clarify, that's, I don't view this as detracting to the view and would tend to support this even without invoking ADA is my first impression of this.
Thank you. Andy?
I agree, I agree with Galen, you know, I respect Mr. Hammond as being a disabled veteran and I appreciate his service and the issue with the ADA, but I don't understand why we're making ADA the issue. I see this as cleaning up the neighborhood, you look at the aerial, there's a lot of vehicles that are exposed to the eyesight, putting in the garage is going to be better. I don't know if we had voted against this previously and the ADA became an issue, but so with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Andy made the motion to approve with, and Linda seconded. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote, all those in favor of approving item five with the stipulations as noted, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. It'll result in a significant improvement in quality of life for them. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to abstain from item number six.
Okay. Item number six.
Thank you. Item number six is fifteen PD zero five zero. It's a major amendment to the plan development to allow a garage as an accessory used to the existing veterinary clinic currently located on the property. Little history behind this, in two thousand and fifteen, planning commission approved another major amendment to the plan development to allow veterinary clinic to be located on the property. Following that approval, the applicant then submitted a minimal amendment to the plan development to allow a carport to be constructed on the property. Upon the construction of the carport, there were some complaints from the neighborhood regarding the size, scale, mass, location of the carport. Following that, the director of community planning at the time Brett Limbaugh determined that he would be revoking the minimal amendment and that any future considerations for garage or accessory structure on the property should be taken before the planning commission. The applicant has availed himself at that opportunity and has submitted a request to construct a one thousand one hundred and sixteen square foot garage for stalls to be located on the property. As a part of this request, he has requested a reduction in the setback from twenty-five feet to zero feet along the northern property line. Let me take you through some slides. This is zoning of the property, it's general commercial district, this area here is the location of Pennington County Housing, it's zone general agriculture district, given its nature as residential, of residential use and the zoning, a twenty-five foot setback is required to the general agriculture district on, at that location. The applicant, as we'll see here in a moment, the applicant is proposing the location of the garage is going to be located in this area, given that unusual location and some topography constraints on the property, as you'll see, that's why they've requested the exception. Future land use shows the property is appropriate for mixed-use commercial and Jackson Boulevard is listed as a principal arterial street on the city's major street plan. The property does not take access directly off of Jackson, rather it takes access off of Clearview Lane. Site plan, north would be in this direction for your consideration and here's the location of the proposed garage. As you can see, the topography on the area is very steep, making the ability to put this garage in any other location difficult. I'll look at the architectural feature, design of the building, it's a little difficult to discern here, but the applicant is proposing to match the existing architecture of the existing building to eliminate any of those concerns previously expressed regarding the scale, scope, and size of the structure, it will match what's there today. Look at the property, the driveway accessing Clearview Lane, sign posted on the property and the location of Pennington County Housing. I'll look at Clearview Lane to Jackson Boulevard. This is a look at that Clearview Lane and the driveway intersection, so the existing veterinary clinic is right here and the proposed garage is actually going to be in this area here, that tree is a good indicator of where that garage is going to be located at. As you can see from this angle, the topography in the area is extreme, making the location of the garage in the other area difficult. Another look at where the garage is proposed to be located at, there are four stalls there today, it's a four-stall garage, so there's no overall decrease in parking as a result of this. That retaining walls, you see it there today as a good indicator of where that property line exists today, so the reduction in setback from twenty-five feet to zero feet would be to allow that garage to be located as close to that retaining wall as possible. I'll look at the existing building today to give you a sense of what the architectural style, color, palette, design of the proposed garage will be. As I've said, they intend to match the existing architectural features. Another look at the site, so the garage, again, where that tree is at in relationship to the nearest other structures, that Pennington County Housing that I noted earlier, how far away any of those structures are from the property line as it exists today. One more look at the site. Based on, again, the steep topography of the site as well as the applicant's plans showing that they're proposing to match the architecture. showing that they're proposing to match the architectural features currently existing on the site, and the, that there's no overall decrease in parking being proposed as a part of this application, staff is recommending that this request be approved with the stipulations noted in the staff report. And staff is available for questions at this time.
Any questions for staff? Any comments on this? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion. Karen moves for approval. Kim seconded. All those in favor approving the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
Thank you. Item number seven is sixteen PD zero zero seven, a major amendment to the plan development to allow mixed-use development and to allow an on-cellicular establishment in conjunction with a restaurant. History on this, in two thousand and fifteen, the Planning Commission approved a major amendment to the plan development to allow flexible office space to be located on the property. That development did not occur. The applicant is now proposing to develop the property with a mix of uses which include residential, six residential uses, some office space, and a proposed restaurant. As a part of that restaurant, they are proposing the sale and service of alcohol. Let me take you through some slides. Property is located in the old TMA building, which is an individually listed building on the historic, or the National Register of Historic Places. It's located southeast of the intersection of Main and Fourth Street. Aerial view of the property shows the existing structure and the parking lot located to the east. The applicant is proposing an exception to reduce the required amount of parking on the site from, sorry, give me a moment. From sixty-two spaces to twenty spaces. As a part of that, the applicant is proposing that a minimum of nine of those spaces be reserved for residential use. As you'll see in their plans, they're proposing that those spaces be gated and restricted access. They're also proposing to include some green space as a part of the development of this for residential use. As a part of that, though, they do request a reduction in the landscaping from ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine points to five thousand points. Since they're providing the green space at all, then they do need to come into compliance with landscaping regulations, so they've asked for that exception as well. The area is zone general commercial district, but is shown as appropriate for the downtown area. It's part of the reason why we can support some of these requests, because what they're showing is that this is anticipated to be developed as part of the downtown in the near-term future. We currently have a study out from Puma, which we anticipate will support expansion of the downtown area into these, this, this area east of Fifth Street. And this type of mixed-use development would fall right in line with what the types of uses we anticipate seeing in that area. Future land use plan shows Main Street is listed as a principal arterial street. A look at the proposed layout for the facility, so as you can see, the residential units, six total units located right there, the green space that I had discussed located adjacent to that, and nine parking spaces being proposed, behind a fence and gate located east of that green space. The rest of the facility would be office space here and here, and restaurant located They are, I should mention, proposing eleven additional parking spaces located onsite, but not restricted to residential use only, to allow for use by the restaurant and office space uses. And they are, noted that the abundant on-street parking located in the area should suffice the service of the facility in the future. This is difficult to read, but it is showing a location of all the on-street parking spaces located in the vicinity around this property, showing that there's a total of sixty-two spaces well within one block walking distance of the facility. Look at the structure with the signs posted on the property. They are not proposing any additions, alterations to the exterior of the facility at this time. Look at Main Street, looking to the east. As you can see, there is quite a bit of on-street parking open during the day. Look at Main Street to the west. Second Street, looking south, I'm sorry, Fourth Street looking south, and the existing parking lot today. So if you can envision, that'll be some green space fenced off with, for the residential parking, and then eleven additional parking spaces up front. Look at the streetscape on Main Street, and one final look at the building. Based on the unique location, the unique design and historic nature of this site, staff believes that a mixed-use development comprised of a mix of residential and commercial uses is appropriate for this area, as we anticipate that this will become part of the downtown or become, this actually a good example of what we want to see in the downtown development in the future. So for that reason, staff does believe that the request of reduction in parking and the request of reduction in landscaping are appropriate for the area, and is recommending that the application be approved with the stipulations noted in the staff report. Staff is available for questions at this time.
Thank you. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. I support this, this item, and I, I wanted to say that that area east of Fifth Street has changed so much over the years. It used to be a motoring public type of thing with a lot of car dealers and gas stations and tire dealers, which is what this one was. And it's changed over time, and it's going to be so exciting to see restaurants and people living down in that area. And I'm, I'm just real pleased that this is going to be turned into something that's, that's of benefit. My question is, do you know when that Puma thing is going to be, come forward with the, with the ordinance changes for that area?
I do, and I'll let Vicki speak to that.
Mr. Chair, if you'll hold tight, at the end of the meeting, Sarah's going to visit with you and invite you to some meetings.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question. I'm just, I'm, I'm supporting this item.
Thanks, Karen. Any further questions or comments on the item? Okay, we'll give it to Linda. Linda made the motion to approve. Galen seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
The applicant has requested that item number eight be continued to the April, I believe, seventh Planning Commission meeting. Staff has received a number of public comment on this, and the applicant has indicated they're not in town, and they'd like to be able to address the comments before the Planning Commission. So with that, staff recommends that the item be continued to the next Planning Commission meeting.
Motion's been made to continue to the next Planning Commission for item number eight. All those in favor, please say aye. Item number nine.
Thank you. Item number nine is sixteen PD ten, final plan development to allow an ice cream shop and restaurants to be located on property located at one thirty Main Street, northeast of the intersection of Main Street and Second Street. This is for the Armadillos. If you've been paying attention to the news, you're aware that Armadillo's proposing to relocate across Second Street from where they are today. This is the final plan development which would allow that request. Let me take you through some slides, show you what they're doing. As you can see, the property is located at the, northeast of the intersection of Second Street and Main Street. It's zone general commercial district. The Armadillo's formal location is located immediately to the west across Second Street, to give you an idea of where this is located at. It's the old location of the breadroot, which the grocery co-op, they propose to redevelop the site, aerial view of what's existing today. It's shown as part of the downtown development area. Main Street at this location is shown as revitalization corridor. This project should encourage that type of redevelopment. Main Street is also considered a principal arterial street in the major street plan. Layout of what they're proposing to do, so the intersection of Main Street and Second Street, they're proposing their primary structure right here, so they will be redeveloping from the breadroot structure that's there today. They do have, similar to the existing location, a couple of outdoor walk-up windows and an outdoor seating area located in front of the facility. And they are proposing a reduction in setback along the western property line right here from minimum twenty-five feet required a day down to five feet. As a part of that, they're proposing some landscaping features located to the west of the building in order to help buffer that and to provide some additional pedestrian seating or pedestrian gathering area. They're also noting here on the site plan that the original Armadillo signs, as they exist today, are being carried over to the new location. Landscaping plan on the property, as you can see, they're proposing three planter boxes along the western property line with central lindens. Parks and Recreation has noted that is an appropriate street tree for the downtown corridor. And then they're proposing landscaping to buffer that pedestrian and that seating area located on the, along Main Street. Parks and Recreation does have some recommendations for the inclusion of landscaping, and we should note, one of those recommendations is that the street tree should be located along Main Street. However, given the landscaping already proposed along the southern property line and given the reduction in setback along, that's being requested along Second Street, the location of the trees on the western property line on the Second Street right-of-way are appropriate in order to buffer that reduced setback as well as expand the pedestrian seating area in the, around the area of the building. Look at the property today, sign posted on the property. This is looking along Main Street to the east and Main Street to the west, the existing Armadillo's location there today. Looking south along Second Street and north along Second Street, the existing breadroot, the signage as it exists today. This is actually looking from the existing Armadillos onto the site, the new proposed location, to see the depth of that location behind the breadroot, and the use of the area right now is unpaved car storage. So redevelopment of this area, well, it's going to look good, and it's going to be a vast improvement in the neighborhood. One more site, or look at the site, looking from the east onto the site. So as previously noted, the applicant is requesting reduction in setback from twenty-five feet to five feet and, excuse me, and a reduction to, or a request to reduce the parking from seventy parking spaces to zero parking spaces. They do, I should note, have five parking spaces located in the alleyway that they are showing that they propose. However, they do, those parking spaces do not have the necessary twenty-six foot parking aisle, so while they are proposing some parking on the site for employees, the, those parking spaces do not technically meet the requirements of Rapid City parking ordinance, which is why they've requested the reduction to zero spaces. And then, the last thing I should note is that they are proposing to put a screening fence in the, within the front yard setback at six feet tall in order to kind of provide some screening and shelter to that pedestrian, that seating area located in front of the business, deflect some of that heavy Main Street traffic so that it's not quite so intrusive onto the, the business. So last thing we should note is that the property is located within the historic environs. The Creamery building is located to the southwest across the intersection. They are within that environs. They have gone to the Historic Review Committee and obtained approval for that. They will come in at the future date for the approval of their signage, which we don't expect will be a problem. With that, staff is recommending that the application be approved with the stipulations noted in the staff report, and we have several representatives available for questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the Planning Commission? Andy?
I just wanted to thank the applicant for reinvesting in Rapid City. I think this will be really great, so thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Karen?
Thank you, and I am echoing the same thing. I want to thank Mike and his son for relocating in the same location. It's, it's nice to see that, and I appreciate that, so thanks, guys.
Seeing no other comments, entertain a motion. Karen made the motion. Andy seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. It is an exciting project. Good luck. Yeah. Mike?
You'll notice up on the dais, I put an invitation reminder for the next milestone we have for the downtown area master plan. I'll just give you a brief overview of kind of where we headed next and what those milestones are. The next group of activities is happening in April. We're holding two work sessions for the Planning Commissioner, City Council, and staff to take a look at some preliminary recommendations that are slated to be going into the plan. We haven't gotten a draft plan yet. We want to have a work session on some of the ideas before we kind of put it into draft form, so I hope to see each of you at one of those two sessions that's noted on the handout. And then to address Karen's question from earlier, looking forward into May for plan adoption, we're looking at having the draft plan come to the Planning Commission for their review and comments and approval on May twenty-sixth. So we'll bring the draft plan through Planning Commission. We'll have a public review comment after it goes through the first round of public hearings, and then bring in the final plan back to you on July twenty-first. That's the estimated timeline.
Karen?
Thank you, Sarah. I, I appreciate that, and I've been several of those, those meetings to kind of look at what's going to happen. My understanding is that hopefully some of the change in the downtown zoning will extend farther east, and I don't know where that's going to be, and that will come to pass as soon as they come forward. Once they do that in May, and say there, there is an extension of the central business district, that would come sometime this summer, I would assume, and those changes then would take place in the summer, and we could have some of that extension. Does that sound reasonable timeframe?
Yeah, that's what we'll be aiming for. We'll be aiming to have the recommendations, hopefully able to bring forward an actual zoning change in the near, as near term as possible. There are notification requirements that we'll want to make sure we're following closely, and it will depend on transitioning in our planning department too. So, but we are aiming to be able to do that shortly after the plan is adopted as possible.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those are some good questions and comments, Karen. I, I kind of have a unique opportunity right now, and I'm with this master plan and being on the Planning Commission, involved with the Destination Rapid City Board, and also doing some work with the foundation at the School of Mines. So it's kind of, it's very interesting to me in seeing how it's all coming together, as well as you also have an independent group of businesses, I believe Matt Element's kind of starting to kick off for that business group that Mr. Brummer's probably a part of as well. So there's lots of different thoughts and theories going on, and kind of a few of us are trying to figure out how to bring everybody together, and I think it's going to be really important, because we have tech coming west, downtown going east, city government with one idea, maybe businesses with a little bit different idea that can be melded together. So I think it's pretty exciting, though, and I think there's a lot of good opportunity to, to really capitalize on, so it's going to be fun.
Thanks. Any further questions or comments for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah. Additional staff items, Vicki? Okay. Look for a motion to adjourn. Galen made the motion. Linda seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Adjourned.